Good morning, everyone. Good morning. We'd like to welcome you to the Mesa City Council Study Session for the morning of February, Thursday, February 13th. Councilmember Thompson is excused from this meeting. The first item on our agenda is to hear a presentation and provide direction on a draft policy regarding city council community outreach funds. Mr. Butler, welcome.
Good morning.
Happy belated birthday. I know I missed it. It was yesterday. I saw you 10 times and didn't see, look at Facebook until 10 o'clock to realize it was your birthday.
I didn't want to tell you how offended I was. So I'm glad I'm not sharing that over television or anything. So thank you for your egregious oversight.
Happy birthday.
You won't forget next year. Thank you.
While we're on the topic, let's, we won't embarrass Natalie by singing to her, but Natalie, happy birthday to you as well. Okay. All right. Anybody else have a birthday?
Next week.
It's a long time from now. All right, anyway.
Yeah, well, thanks, Mayor. And anyone can drop off presents by my office. Please feel free. Mayor and Council, we had some desire by members of this committee to look at our discretionary policy. It really flowed from our council discretionary fund policy. This really flowed out of a media request that was for every city in the valley, looking at different ways that discretionary funds are spent, what they're spent for. And so that asked us to really look at, are there things we could be doing differently, things that we could refresh since the program was started several years ago? And so by doing that, going through, staff did a great job of looking at different cities around the valley, looking at best practices, what are they doing differently than what we're doing? The easy answer is there's no consistent rhyme or reason for how different communities treat these funds. Every city, I think, has directed programs differently, really designed by their different councils to meet those needs and what those criteria are for the various projects. You have everything from the city of Phoenix that has a big pot of money, for lack of a better term, for their individual council districts. And then the council members have a lot of discretion about how that fits into their overall spending as it relates to staff for their district and other projects and travel that those council members choose to do. And then you have other communities that have more specified district projects that are allowed under these funds. So as we looked for best practices, it really became a notion of each community has designed this to meet their own needs. And in looking through some of those, though, one of the things that struck us that staff wanted to bring back for your consideration was we thought the city of Glendale had a great idea in that any time money is spent out of discretionary funds from mayor and council, they fill out a form describing who the organization is and, more importantly, the purpose of those funds and how it relates to the mission at the city. And I know this is in your backup material that you've looked at, and I'll just bring it up on the screen as well. But, you know, one of those, the best element of that is it's the council member, his or herself, describing why this is important to them and why this is important to their district in the city of Mesa, and then attesting to that, signing for that. We thought that disclosure is really one of the best practices that, you know, we find from other cities. And not every city does this, but we thought Glendale had a good idea as they looked at this of just requiring that directly from their council member to describe those projects because each community organization, each training opportunity is going to be viewed differently by each council member. And as staff, we didn't really feel like it was our job to tell you how to do that. We could provide some suggestions. And so we thought that the criteria utilized for community funds to go towards different projects in your district or for training opportunities or otherwise were consistent with what we did see overall from different communities. It's just adding this different additional layer of you being able to describe what that may look like and the purpose to the city. The other component we saw was just continuing to train and allow staff that opportunity, council that opportunity. Obviously, we have changeover of members of the council after different elections. We have new city council assistant staff that play various roles. And just making sure that council and the assistants that are helping them are adhering to all of our city policies on procurement and other things because there is, you know, complexity to it and sometimes people make mistakes on things. And so continued training is obviously something that everyone can embrace and look at as time passes and turnover happens within the council offices and the council members themselves. So, Mayor and Council, at that point, I just want to open it up if you have any questions, but that is the heart of what BLET staff is recommending, formalizing the policy that you see and adding the additional disclosure that's suggested. And then, of course, additional training for mayor and council office if questions arise. So, Mr. Mayor, with that, that's the short and sweet aspect of what BLET staff might suggest to the council.
Great. Thank you, Scott. So I'm sure there are questions here, and this form is obviously a good idea. I think if we have to articulate what the justification is for the expenditure, that will help us to regulate ourselves, to, you know, identify what the purpose is. But in checking these boxes, we're certifying that when we sign this, that this expenditure is in compliance with the policy and that it's in compliance with the ethics guidelines. And I just want to make sure that we know what those are when we check that box, right? So that the, what the actual policy would be on the other attachment to the memo, is that right, the city council community outreach funds?
There's, yeah, there's a...
Is that correct?
That's right, Mayor.
Those are policy guidelines that are included. Is that what you're referring to, Mayor?
Yes. I'm just thinking, the other attachment to your report.
Yes, sir.
That's where you go to, in order for us to check that box, we need to be competent on these guidelines, correct?
Yes, sir. And those are taken directly out of the standing management policies that apply to all city employees. That is ultimately comes down from the city manager, but takes into account in those policies any state and federal laws that might dictate different aspects, whether that's travel or procurement. Those are the things that we see that it's important for the details of this and important for people just to understand different policy and procedure and what drives that. And that's one of the things we think that, obviously, with the different aspects of what council does, making sure that the different points are followed within all of those policies and that proper documentation or, you know, obviously different for procurement versus travel, but making sure all of those different points are adhered to.
Mayor, I would suggest maybe council together, we ought to look at the actual policy and guidelines because, I think as staff, we want to make sure council's comfortable with the language under that and the categories that are provided because, and then there's procedures. But I think, hopefully, council's read those because that will be what we will look at in the report. I think that's what the council has been pretty much following, but I think it gets some specifics there, will make sure you're comfortable with that language because that policy, once it's adopted, will be the standard which will be held to when you make decisions regarding the allocation of those funds. So there's kind of two parts. There's funding categories, and then there's the actual procedures that will be followed. And that's where it references in the procedures existing management policies regarding purchasing and travel and P-card programs.
Yeah. Mayor and, Mr. Brady's correct. We have not changed on the first part of that document where it talks about funding categories. Those have been consistent since the program was started several years ago. And Jill, we didn't have any changes to that, did we? No. Those are, that was exactly the same. And as you stated, or as Mr. Brady stated, the procedures, we just wanted to officially formalize through this. That is consistent with how we've been treating that, with the exception of the disclosure forms that I spoke about, but just making sure that we're adhering to management policies and that, and reinforcing like point five on the procedures. I know this was something that was important to mayor and council, was just reaffirming that these funds are important to the city of Mesa, to our mission.
Okay. I see there's also a draft monthly community outreach funds expenditure form. Is that just something cumulative? At the end of the month, you say all of the individual forms get compiled onto one form?
Mayor, yes. What, as we're looking at this, there's sometimes a lot of smaller expenditures on this. We're suggesting $50 or less that could just be submitted monthly. So that's not something you would have to submit every day or every time that a certain expenditure like that occurred. If it's something larger, a larger expense over $50, whether that was a donation to a community organization or a project that you're assisting with in the community or a training, that's something that, at the end of that, you're able to bring back your receipts or your expenditures and disclose through the larger amount. But the monthly form was meant to be those smaller expenditures that don't really require quite that daily or project-based reporting.
Mr. Luna.
Scott, will this be a form that's going to be online for assistants to fill out and then they'll use our electronic signature? Or will we actually have a physical paper that we'll actually have to sign and turn in on a monthly basis? And then the second part is the training. Are they going to go to specific training to ensure that we're following the guidelines? Sometimes we get bogged down on other issues and we're dealing with community issues and... But they're going to keep us, make sure that we're following these guidelines and that we're appropriate.
Mayor and Councilmember Luna, to answer your first question, I think staff's recommendation on these forms because of kind of the desire to make sure that the disclosure adheres to what you'd like to see is to have council, to have you sign the document and it be on your signature, not electronically. That would be the recommendation so that it can be validated that you have looked at this expenditure, you're party to this expenditure, and you're directly attesting to that fact. And so that's certainly the recommendations coming from staff. And then, Mayor and Councilmember Luna, you talked about training. That's one of the things that we want to look at individually with each of your council assistants and with any member of council that may be interested. Some council assistants may have received this just in the last, you know, several months because of other positions or other issues that have come up. Some might have been with the office for a while, and it's a good refresher, probably for all of us, on some of these policies. So that's what we want to work with individually and find out the best way to implement some of the training.
Jen.
Yes, I have a couple of questions. They're minor ones, but just on the paperwork issue. Is electronic okay? Or are we going to have to compile large some pieces of paper? I just see, it's a lot easier, especially in today's world, to provide electronic than finding it and printing it out and then getting to my council assistant and she makes her pile. Can we just have it electronic as far as copies of receipts and such? And then the second part of the question is on those receipts, is sometimes I get a little, like if I'm traveling or something like that and I might use my card to buy something, let's say is a cup of coffee at Starbucks and it's, you know, a couple dollars or whatever, I'll swipe the card, but I don't. I'm supposed to get a paper receipt for that that's itemized. And sometime, in a lot of retailers now, or, you know, getting paper itemized receipts, even restaurants or anything like that are really not that easy. Can we have, like, I know for business, like if it's under a certain threshold, I know for my business, you know, if it's under $20, if it's under $10. If you have the line item on your statement and you, it's a Starbucks coffee and it's $2, that that is a sufficient receipt rather than having a piece of paper with it itemized?
Yeah. Mayor and Councilmember Duff, let me answer your first question. Yes, we can have that available electronically, both for you and your assistant. I think what the idea on the signature was simply that we, on the front end, as people are filling out information, we want it to be as easy as possible from just a moving paper standpoint. But then to have the council member actually sign that paper before it's submitted and it can be scanned into our system or exactly how we do that. But to allow the council member to fill that out electronically on the front end, print that out, sign it, and then we can use it for our record-keeping. On the second part, and I, Mayor and Councilmember Duff, I think that's a good distinction that you make. What, you give an example of something that would happen on travel, for example. The travel form, the normal travel forms that you're used to seeing and that your assistant helps you with, both before on authorizing travel and on the back end of any travel that talks about expenditures or rental cars or any of the expenses registration that comes along with that, that is still adhered to exactly the same way. How that would function, though, in relation to this disclosure with discretionary funds is that that overlying document that stated the purpose of the trip would be attached or would be available with that travel form. So the things that you deal with right now, whether you go to an Arizona League of Cities Conference or a National League of Cities, would function the same way. That might be a bad example, though, because that's not pulling from your discretionary. If you went to a training on technology or, you know, environmental best practices, whatever the case may be, you would still have a travel form, a travel document that adheres to all the city policies with that. It's just since that is something that you're paying for out of your discretionary, that form would supplement all the other required documentation that you have today, and it would just attest to, I'm attending this training because of X, Y, and Z, and that's the importance to the city of Mesa. So nothing would change, Mayor and Councilmember Duff, on how we treat those kind of expenditures. That's exactly the same as today. This is just an additional disclosure on top of that to say why that training or why that travel was important to the city.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Luna.
I was trained by my assistant to take a picture of my receipt. That way you don't have to worry about it.
And you're always going to see your receipt, though?
No, I don't. I give them, I take a picture of receipt and send it to them.
Yeah, but I often, with electronic...
Yeah, I always get a receipt.
I don't always get it.
Because you have to have it itemized.
Sometimes I don't have it available with the square.
But I just take a picture and just send it to them. Right as soon as I do anything, take a picture, send it to them.
Yeah. Mayor and Councilmember, we're glad to work with it. I would say this body does a great job. Everyone occasionally has a lost receipt or whatever it may be.
But Scott, if you're on a per diem, you don't need to be copying receipts anyway.
That's also...
So the receipts aren't needed if you're working off a travel per diem, right?
We don't use per diems as far as I know.
You should. It'd be easier.
Okay.
What was that question? You can use on travel, you can use a travel per diem per the location you're going to, which then just allocates based on the federal, I don't know what it's called, there's a federal index out there for cities, and then you just, that's the amount you have for meals for that. And they break it, I think you can break it out by the different meals.
You can.
And then you just get a, you choose, you can just choose to do a per diem versus a receipt, you know, tracking it that way.
Mayor and Council, yeah. Mr. Brady's right. That's certainly an option and could be an easier option for you just to do that instead of keeping up with the individual receipts is to accept the per diem as is customary when a lot of staff are on travel for trainings or other issues around the city.
So I think we're talking about two separate things, though. I mean, the travel policies, I think we all need to be better versed on the travel policies, but I think that's a fairly cut and dry issue is here's how much you can spend and here's the appropriate ways you can spend it. So that's, there's not a lot of discretion attached to that. The more problematic to me is this policy because there's still a lot of discretion that's given to council members because you're just kind of, which is fine. Personally, I would like more rules because then I have more confidence that I'm not on the other side of, you know, the line that I want to be on. But if the preference of council is to continue to have a fairly broad discretion in terms of how you can spend your money and you just need to follow these guidelines in terms of documenting and signing saying, I've determined that this is an appropriate use of this discretionary funds, you know, I can live with that. But it still seems like it's, the burden's going to be up to us to determine that it's appropriate and then to explain why it's appropriate when we fill out this form. And if that's what council, the council wants, then that's what we got. I'd be happy to have more rules, you know, just so that, but maybe I'm the only one who feels that way.
Well, Mayor, I will say those categories and the expenditures really reflected the view of all of your predecessors when this program was established. As staff, certainly if we were directed to put more criteria into this, we could. It's just, it's just as difficult as staff to try to tell you, you know, since you all have unique differences in your districts or others about that. We welcome that. That's why our recommendation wasn't to change the categories. We're more than happy to do that if directed by council, was the disclosure side because that's where we thought there could be added value in ensuring that these expenditures adhere to those broader categories.
Okay. Well, and this was vetted at a council committee prior to coming here, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Council, any other questions? So it sounds like we all just need to make sure we're up to speed on training and follow this policy.
Then we'll make these, this will go in place and we'll make these forms.
May I have a comment?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Freeman.
You know, I thank you for this framework. You know, this gives us some good guidelines that to work through, and I appreciate you listing all the examples of expenditures and on the discretionary as well. So, you know, I've always tried to work within those parameters and keep my monies within my district or within our city and help all the things that you've shown as examples. So I appreciate this, and I'm looking forward to working with this. So, thanks.
Great. And Mayor, if it's the will of the council, as I think staff's hearing, we'll finalize all this, finalize the forms, work with the council assistants, know where to pull that down from so that can be of help to you, and then also look at the different training opportunities.
Okay. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is to hear a presentation and provide direction on a proposed 2020 Transportation Capital Improvement Bond Program. RJ, Eric, welcome.
Good morning, Mayor, members of the council. My name is RJ Zeta with the Transportation Department. With me is Eric Gudarian, our Deputy Director for Traffic Engineering. In the audience behind me is Orlando Otero, who's our Deputy Director for Field Operations, and Amy McConnell, who led our Mesa Moves campaign. So what we'd like to talk about this morning is an overview of the outreach campaign that we recently committed that we are calling Mesa Moves. We'll show some examples of some previous investments that council has authorized, just to kind of give a flavor of some of the projects that bond funds and other funding sources have allowed us to complete some pretty big projects, and then we'll look to the future. Our objective in Mesa Moves was to have a bilingual outreach campaign to collect feedback from residents and business to ensure that the projects that staff is bringing forward for council consideration align with what our community thinks is needed and important. So as part of the Mesa Moves campaign, we received over 6,000 completed surveys across three platforms, our website, both in English and Spanish. We also used a new technique, Google Publisher, that we worked with our Chief Digital Officer on, where if you were looking at news sites, a survey could pop up and ask you to respond that way. And they also, we also did a targeted campaign working with Telemundo. In addition to that, we had a number of key stakeholder interviews, a number of focus groups that included the Transportation Advisory Board. We had one for bicycle and pedestrian and some different demographics in the community, as well as for community meetings. What we learned during the, with the feedback, you know, that we got, and probably not shocking, is that, you know, most important during commuting, you know, in the morning or in the evening is, you know, minimal traffic congestion, you know, but there was also a decent-sized group of survey respondents that are interested in alternate modes of transportation. And then aside from safety, which is always our number one priority, again, our citizens are very interested in a well-maintained transportation infrastructure. The feedback specifically from the focus groups was very big on safety, of course, is our number one priority. Maintenance, coming out of the focus groups, there really was a lot of positive feedback on how well the city does at maintaining our transportation infrastructure, but that perhaps we could do more communicating regarding budget and needs. And lastly, within several of the focus groups, should council direct that a bond question is placed on the ballot, you know, that the residents would want to know what the return on investment is for the projects, that could be included in a potential bond question. Eric?
So as part of the, as we finished up the Mesa Moves campaign and staff started looking at projects, we decided to group projects based on certain categories to fit some of the feedback that we received. So as we go throughout the rest of the presentation, these projects will be grouped as such. So street enhancement projects are your traditional road widening projects, or if we have an intersection project where we're adding lanes or adding safety features, those fall under street enhancements. The RTO reconstruction and drainage projects are maintenance projects. A roadway has a life to it. The, you know, we do a really good job of maintaining roads with slurry seals and other treatments and such, but at the end of the life, the road needs to be completely rebuilt. Here, we're reaching that end of life for quite a few of our arterials. And then we have drainage projects to address flooding issues through the city. Multimodal projects are projects that we've identified where we have excess roadway capacity that we could add more pedestrian or bicycle elements to the street, similar to what we did on Southern Avenue through the Fiesta District. Shared-use bike and pedestrian paths are the traditional pathways that we build along canals or along ADOT right-of-way. And then smart city technology, looking towards the future and making sure that our systems are compatible with new technology and we can work more efficiently. So just looking back, we decided to look back over the last eight years at projects that had been completed in these categories and give just an overview of how many projects and what's been invested. So we had a total of 46 projects since 2012 be completed in these categories. Total investment that the city of Mesa paid was $165.3 million. And as part of that, either through federal grants or through the regional ALCP reimbursement, we received $37.3 million back to the city. So we had a net of $128 million that we invested in these, this infrastructure. So to graphically represent that, we've provided a map. The projects are color-coded based on type of project throughout the city. There are a lot of orange dots. We have, we spent quite a bit and focused on quite a few drainage projects over the last eight years to hopefully help with flooding some major projects. RJ will go over also.
Economic activity. Our transportation network is, you know, really the skeleton. It's, you know, it's, you know, and with that right-of-way, it's not just transportation, I mean, it's all of our utility infrastructure and all that. But we want to just highlight a couple of projects that really do support economic growth in the city. So the first that you're all familiar with is the recently completed Elliott Road Tech Corridor project. And here are some of the businesses, you know, that are located, you know, within that corridor. The Rio Salado Stadium Connector, this was a shared-use path. This is an example where we actually did remove a lane of traffic both on Country Club and on Alma School, but this allowed us to connect the HoCom Stadium with Sloan Park and again, you know, with some of the businesses, you know, that, you know, follow along that pathway. that pathway. And lastly, Southern Avenue, as Eric mentioned, was a project that was completed before I, I came to Mesa, but this is a great example where we, you know, provided, you know, a more friendly environment for, for bicycle users and pedestrians, but also supporting, you know, economic growth and redevelopment in that area.
Sure. So looking forward, I think some of the, as we share a list of, of projects and, and programs, I just want to go over some of the assumptions and how staff arrived at, at that. So as we're looking forward, we're looking forward eight years into the future, so starting with fiscal year 21 through fiscal year 28. And staff created and, and made these recommendations based on the existing needs that were already in the adopted CIP. The feedback we received through the Mesa Moves program that, that we had last year, projects that are, that are in the regional RTO lifecycle program that we can receive reimbursement for, maintenance and lifecycle replacement needs as we identify them. And then also, we have multimodal and shared use path priorities that come out of our Bike and Ped Master Plan. And then last year, we, we recently completed the Southeast Mesa Transportation Plan that provided a list of priorities in, in that section of the city also.
Sure. Excuse me, Mr. Freeman.
Eric, hi. And your, how often do your analysis of our asphalt in our streets and in our districts? I mean, do you, do you drive them? Do you look at the integrity of the asphalt and then perhaps future? Like in my district, I know RJ and I have driven in some areas that I go, you know, these roads are really bad. And how do we get these into the CIPs and, and help with future progress on them? Is there, can you give me some idea on that?
Sure. Sure. Mayor, Vice Mayor, a couple of things we do. We have a pavement management system and staff that go out on a regular basis. So we're looking every year at the condition of our, our streets. This helps us develop our mill and overlay program. That's where we get into the neighborhoods, you know, and we have about $8 million a year that is transferred to a projects fund to help go in and do the concrete work that we have to do based on the Americans with Disabilities Act, but also the pavement. So we have a very thorough system that we use to evaluate our pavement condition throughout the city. Eric's team then is also looking from a safety standpoint at intersections and all that with his team to look to drive the highest priorities, you know, from a safety standpoint of what projects we would bring forward to council for consideration.
So I guess, how often do you drive the streets and look at them? I mean, you do it yearly, annually?
Annually, yes, the whole city.
Okay. All right, so, yeah.
It's annually, but then, you know, we could get a concern that comes from a council, you know, assistant or from, from one of you directly, hey, can you go out and look at this? So we're not tied, you know, just to, you know, the rigid annual, you know, cycle. So as things come up, we will reallocate if there's a bigger need. So it's a process that we can, we, is fluid in that sense and, and we can adapt to. Obviously, we have a budget, you know, that we're working within each year. But in addition to our repaving budget, which is $8 million, we have $8 million that we dedicate towards what we call pavement preservation, and that's the crack ceiling and slurry ceiling. So sometimes it, it, it's not a complete, you know, repaving job that's necessary because obviously that gets expensive, but then a maintenance treatment might work as well.
I guess my, my question to you is in some streets, I have, I feel like asphalt degradation of the asphalt water retention, a lot of water storm drain issues in certain streets. And you can see that the asphalt is really degregating. I don't know if this follows our agenda here, but I'd like to just sit down and, and kind of look at your overall plan for some streets in the district that I drive and, and see if they qualify as far as safety concerns and, and residential concerns.
We can certainly do that.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
Hey RJ, in regards to what Mark is asking, do you actually have like a satellite photo overview map that shows the, the age, like a citywide view of like color coded where like, you know, green was the most recent replaced, red's maybe the oldest that shows the entire city and like which roads are actually the oldest throughout the city?
Mayor, Councilmember Whitaker, we prepare what's called a pavement forecast. We'd have to go back in time with that, you know, but we do identify across the city on an annual basis where we need to do both a more significant level of work, which would be repaving or our pavement preservation projects. We have, it's, we have a database, it's called Paver, and that's where we, there's a number of criteria that are measured or evaluated. So those data points are then used to help drive where we need to focus our resources. I'd have to go back and talk with our, our staff and our GIS staff to see what we can draw out of that system, but it's the data in the system that we use to develop our plans for, for the upcoming year. We're actually looking right now, Mr. Otero is working with his team to take that forecast out to at least three years. Ultimately, we'd like to see it at a five-year level, you know, so that we're looking further ahead. And that way, if you have a concern or you hear a concern from a constituent and, and you call us, we can say, this is what we evaluate the current condition of whatever street it is, and here's where it fits into our, our planning documents for work in the future.
Yeah, and I assume that you would also calculate the amount of traffic that travels over a road, right? I assume like, I'm guessing baseline in Southern, right off of the 60, probably have the most traffic than any other streets. Would you prioritize those being replaced because the amount of travel that goes over them, over streets that are tucked away?
Sorry. Mayor, Councilmember Whitaker, Eric will talk about that a little bit later. We have what are called levels of service. That's, you know, when you get into intersections, we annually update our traffic counts, we're regularly looking at that, and that also helps us drive the priorities on the bigger projects. So from a capital project standpoint, for example, right now, our highest priority project, which we're getting closer to construction on, is Southern and Stapley, because that's the highest accident location in the city. So safety is a big driver as well as, for example, if you go out to Southeast Mesa and look at Ellsworth Road, you know, the, the volume of traffic, you know, because of growth in that area is certainly helping us, you know, drive, you know, the, how we prioritize improvements, you know, in that area as well.
Okay. Yeah, offline, if you could send me the map that shows the age of all the complete repaved, I don't know if you have something like that, that shows an overlay of which year the whole city was repaved?
I'll talk with our staff and see what we can put together.
I would appreciate it. And the last question.
I think just to tack onto that, as far as volumes go on roadways, different roadways are designed to different pavement thickness so that they last longer if there's, there's more traffic or if we expect more truck traffic, especially on a roadway, it'll be designed differently.
So it's not as easy as just looking at the chart to see how old it is because it could be a higher density product?
Correct. But that's why we have this program is, is to, to help us figure out all of those different criteria.
Okay. And then you guys had discussed reimbursement through grants. Are there specific repayment projects that qualify for grants and other reimbursements from the state or federal government and some that don't? Or can you just help me understand why, why we get some money from them and, or how is that?
Mayor, Councilmember Whitaker, and we'll talk about this a little bit more as we look forward. So you'll hear the term Proposition 400. That's the half cent sales tax that was approved by the voters back, I think, in 2004-ish. And that program is actually going to expire at the end of 2025. Combined with that half cent sales tax, there are some federal funds that come into the, the program as well. Those, the reimbursement that we get for those projects is typically tied to either safety improvement or capacity improvements. So if we were just doing a reconstruction on an arterial street by itself, that would not be eligible for federal funding. However, we are able to extend the limits of projects. So for example, when we rebuild the intersection of Southern and Stapley, that is eligible for regional reimbursement. The arterial lifecycle program is the mechanism for that. We're able to extend the limits from the intersection to include some reconstruction that otherwise would not be eligible for reimbursement, if that makes sense. So we try to stretch the reimbursement dollars as best we can. The neighborhood resurfacing projects that we do, that, those are not eligible for regional or federal reimbursement, and that's a combination of highway user revenue and local street sales tax that we use for those projects.
Okay. And lastly, on that stadium connector that you spoke about in the previous slide?
Yes.
I think I've rode that path before, and I just wanted to confirm. By the way, I love what you guys have done by completely separating the bike lane from traffic, but I just wanted to confirm, is that entirely segregated at this point? Or are there parts of that path that would still need capital allocation to complete the complete segregation of bike and pedestrian traffic from vehicles?
Council, Mayor, Councilmember Whitaker, the project as we see it is complete. There is a section along 10th Street that goes through the neighborhood where bicycles and vehicles share the street.
Oh, that little side street?
Yeah, that, that's a local neighborhood street, and we didn't envision, we'd have to take parking away from in front of houses to do that, but that project is complete.
Yeah, I just want to confirm, like, all the major traffic, though, it's completely isolated?
Yes, correct.
Okay, thank you, guys.
That's a great example, though, where we're connecting to Tempe in that case, and we've got some other, another path project that we'll talk about a little bit later. You know, we're regionally, you know, we're making connections so folks can come into Mesa and, you know, go, go out of Mesa. And that was really a good project.
So Mayor Kels, can I just clarify real quick, because we're, I can tell we're kind of mixing things here. So, and to be clear what we're talking about today, because we can come back another time and talk about maintenance and extending life of the streets. Everything you're hearing here, literally, even when it's an arterial, it's a reconstruction. In order to qualify both for the regional transportation funding as well as for the bond funding, these are literally either new streets or reconstruction, well, they don't have happy streets, but, or pathways. So they're not overlays, they're not extending lives. So we're not, that's not included here. This is all reconstructions or new streets. I don't know, is there another category?
Yeah, I think reconstructing the difference is we're taking, not only, we're not only taking up all the pavement, but we're taking out the, the road base, the dirt that's underneath and recompacting and creating a new street where an old street was.
So this, what we're talking about today has nothing to do with overlays and crack seals. Those are completely different. If it's an existing older street that needs to have some level of maintenance to extend the life, that's one thing. Otherwise, if it were to fit into this category, it'd have to be justified as literally an entire, you know, like, just as Eric said, we're, we're starting over again with the street and maybe the drainage also.
Okay. So the, just so we're, I'm clear, we're talking about the transportation capital improvement bond program. So that's separate from a maintenance program?
Yes. We'll talk about that during the budget. That'll be, that portion is primarily funded, well, is exclusively funded, the maintenance operation is funded out of the transportation sales tax.
Okay.
And so we'll go through that during the budget process. And again, council, recognize, this is only intended to start the conversation about these CIP transportation projects. This is staff taking a first shot at it. We recognize after today, there'll be a lot of conversation with council members about priority, there may be other projects, but I want to make sure we all understand kind of the, I want to call it criteria, but the types of projects that would really be considered in a bond, right? So that it's, we're just trying to put these categories together and show you kind of our first shot at this, kind of how we've established priority, but you may have other ideas that we could fit into here. But again, it's not necessarily, it wouldn't be a maintenance project, it would have to be something new or reconstruction.
Got it. You know, and, and so I, I won't ask the question I was going to ask then, which in, in my neighborhood, we recently had some ADA pavement replacement projects going on, and that provoked a lot of questions from my neighbors, saying, hey, why are you busting up perfectly good concrete? And it looks somewhat wasteful. And so at some point, if we, and I, I know it's, I know a little bit of the answer, but I'm anxious to get a better answer that I can share with them on that. So.
Sorry, Mayor, very quickly, the Americans with Disabilities Act requires cities that if we are modifying the pavement or modifying the street infrastructure, we have to bring the abutting curb ramps up to current standards. So that is a call we get regularly because someone looks at that ramp and physically, you know, there's nothing wrong with it, but there are some unfortunate examples of cities around the country that were not doing that, that the Department of Justice came in and came down on those cities pretty hard. So we explain to people that it is our obligation, and we also try to make it a positive, you know, that we're trying to make our city more inclusive, you know, in terms of people that might have mobility, mobility issues.
Well, I appreciate you mentioning that, because I, I'm sure that's, as you say, a question that comes up frequently.
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, I think we, we stopped you mid-presentation. Please continue.
So moving on to the, the planned projects that we have and, and these categories, we've identified a total of 39 total projects across the, the five categories for a total of transportation dollars of $339 million. As part of that, we've identified $107.5 million worth of reimbursements or, or grants that, that either from the region, we have a project that we would be partnering with Gilbert and the county on that we'd receive, receive reimbursement back from, or federal grants.
What's also important to note, Mayor, and council members, you'll see in the parentheses next to street enhancements and the arterial reconstruct projects is utility work. So, you know, if we're going in and as Eric described, we're rebuilding the street and we're going all the way down to dirt, you know, that's the right time if there's aging utility infrastructure, water, gas, electric, to partner with our utility departments as well.
So as part of this, we've, for the street, at least the street enhancement projects, we've, we have a prioritization matrix. We've looked at different categories to be able to hopefully rate them. We've looked whether we have an outside funding source, whether it's regionally funded. We've also looked at the capacity and congestion at the intersection, the, the safety along the roadway at the intersection.
That's level of service.
The level of service. Pavement condition, whether the, the pavement is new or needs to be replaced. And then also, as RJ mentioned, that, you know, we do coordinate with our utilities. We don't want our utilities to be in there two years after we've been in the intersection. So if the utilities have a higher priority, that also raises the priority of the project. So the next few slides are a list of projects by, by each program. I'm not going to go through each project specifically. I'll be happy to answer any questions about them, but we've listed them in priority level. Once again, street enhancements, most of these projects are roadway widening projects where we either have two or four lanes of, of traffic and, and we need more on the roads. We have a couple of intersection projects that we've identified, whether there's safety issues there or capacity issues that, that we just need, need more lanes. We've identified that also. All right, RTO reconstruction and drainage, there, there's a big category there, RTO reconstruction. We've broken the, that $50 million group up into, to three different pots of money as we go through this, but we've identified quite a few locations, quite a few arterials that need to be rebuilt. And then we have other projects there. The multimodal projects, we've identified as far as locations that have excess lanes that we, we don't need as many lanes that are there. The one, I just want to highlight the Center Street project that's number one there. That really came out of the Mesa Moves campaign. As we did outreach to, to the community, there's really a desire to be able to get into the downtown area on bike. And so looking at this project, this would connect up to our consolidated canal stadium connector pathway and, and come down Center Street into downtown.
Eric, is that going to take out a lane, are you saying?
That, that's the idea right now. We haven't fully flushed out what that exactly looks like, whether, you know, what sort of lanes that would look like, if it'd be like the stadium connector, it would look like something else. But yeah, so, you know, I think we have five, four lanes on Center Street and we don't have a lot of traffic there. So that's the idea.
And I can chime in just in trying to study on how we use our roads differently. Sometimes it's just the width of the lanes. Sometimes our lanes for our cars are very overstated, and we can see that on some of the, like, First Avenue, First Street and some of it. So it's not necessarily always losing lane as it is making those lanes narrower. They're, and the narrower they are, usually, traffic proceeds more cautiously, slows down a little bit more, the more wide the propensity to speed. So there's different ways of looking at how to use the space besides just losing what you already have.
Okay, I was just going to be selfish. I want to make sure my drive, my tractor can drive down the lane.
Weird.
It's only 15 foot wide.
Vice Mayor, we'll make sure you can get from point to point.
No, I just, I just want to make sure we have the conversation with our neighborhoods when we do that, because I've had some pushback with the current connector stadium, you know, west of Country Club and through the neighborhood, 10th Street and such. So there is still concern today about it, but looking forward to the conversation.
There definitely will be outreach and, and we have to take into account all users, yes.
Thanks.
We have a list of shared use paths that extend on, on the work that, that we're doing right now and also identifying new parts of, of the city. Our ultimate goal, I think I've talked about shared use shared use paths more than anything else with council since I've been here, but, you know, our ultimate goal is really to get shared use paths along all of our canals, along the 202 loop, to be able to, you know, then connect those canal paths with a kind of a circular loop around Mesa, we know that's going to take years to do, but that's the ultimate goal, and this is part of that. And then our final two categories, smart city technologies, really upgrading our technology, staying current with technology so that we can use, or we can keep our traffic signal system up to date and be able to communicate with whatever new technology comes out, and then we have some citywide transportation and transit projects that are more pots of money to be able to, to be able to do things as we need, as needs come up.
Did want to mention one project under smart cities that our transportation staff is currently working on with the fire and medical department, if you can picture, if you, for the term signal preemption, that's what allows the fire apparatus to move through an intersection by taking control of the signal, that's a visual and an optical system right now.
Strobe light.
It's a strobe light, and the accuracy of that sometimes can be off, we're working on a GPS-based solution where there would not be any physical hardware on the signals, but that, through the magic of what our traffic engineers do, that the apparatus would talk to our system, and even before, especially where we have fire stations that are located close to intersections, it would be talking, you know, even before the fire truck leaves the station, so that's just one example, we're bringing Maricopa County into that conversation, because there are intersections that are controlled, you know, by the county that don't currently have signal preemption, so that's just one example of how we're trying to use technology to be, to work smarter. And, go ahead.
Yeah, so here's a map of all those projects, and throughout the city, once again, color-coded by type of project, if there's any questions about a specific project, we'll be happy to answer those.
Thank you. So, moving forward, and you've heard the term ALCP, again, the Arterial Lifecycle Program, so as I mentioned, the current proposition for 100 sales tax sunsets at the end of 2025, so at the Maricopa Association of Governments, I know there's, there's conversations happening with the managers, got a working group, obviously at the Transportation Policy Committee and the Regional Council, you know, there's, there's a lot of, you know, conversation of, you know, how to move forward, you know, with that program, so we're working on that, but under the current program, there is a 30% match that is required from the local agencies to be able to use regional funds, and so, projects must be under construction by the end of the current program to be eligible for reimbursement, and that becomes important as we look at a potential bond question, as we've noted before, there is the potential for $86 million in additional reimbursement by the end of the plan, we have currently of that, about $44 million that are not additional, sorry, in addition to that, that we could potentially use in ALCP funds, thanks, Eric.
The challenge, Mayor, council, with that, is that you have to spend the money first before you get the reimbursement, so it's, it's a cash flow problem for us, right, if we don't have the available cash, for example, bonds, you have to go spend it, and then once you spend it, the money comes back, and then you're able to, then we could spend it on what other project we want, but so, it really becomes a timing issue for us, it's a great, it helps, because you leverage, you know, dollars that are being collected for the whole region, but the, the timing and the cash flow of that is, becomes somewhat problematic for us to front those dollars and then to get them back, so, whether or not we're going to be in a position to really take advantage of all of the dollars that are still available for Mesa before that time period, which is coming up on us quickly, you'll see, we'll show you later, but I just want you to think in terms that, it's, it sounds great, but at the, at the end of the day, you still have to spend the money first before you get the money back, so, that's part of our challenge.
Mayor, as Mr. Brady says, and we could be in construction on a project now, but the reimbursement might not be coming until 2024, you know, there's a whole schedule within the ALCP that maps out where the, when the reimbursements are coming.
Yeah, Jeremy.
The 70/30 split, the 70% is our cost, the 30% is the reimbursement.
Reverse, sorry.
It's reversed.
Yeah, that's why it's such a good deal, I mean.
It is a good deal, so you spend 30, you get 70.
Correct.
And what amount, what's the maximum amount that we could possibly spend in order to take advantage of that 70/30 split, like, what, is that reimbursement amount maxed out at a certain dollar?
Well, there's a certain amount of projects that have already been approved, so when Prop 400 was voted on, there was a list of projects for Mesa, so I don't know what's the remaining, is that what that number is?
So, the remaining is the 86 million plus the 44 million, what's allotted to Mesa itself, so that comes out to be 130, that's the 70%, we'd have to spend close to $200 million on projects that are eligible for that to receive all 130 million dollars back.
And within the next?
Five years.
Five years.
Which, you know, in reality, with the complexity of street projects and coordination with utilities, to be under construction in 2025, we have to be under design by 2023.
Do those expire?
Yeah.
Yes.
The whole program sunsets.
When would we have to start a project in order, that's 2023, you're saying?
Yes.
We would need to be in design engineering by 2023 to be in construction by 2025.
But, and we also want to, we need to spend some time to show you what, what those projects look like, we're not sure that, all of, I mean, I guess we could work to find all those eligible projects, but the question is, do you want to put all your money just in that, we still have other projects that are going to be needed to be done, too.
Those, all of these types of projects currently fall under the street enhancement project category.
They're all, okay.
It doesn't have anything to do with multimodal or maintenance or arterial reconstruct.
So that first category that we saw that long list, those are projects that would be eligible.
That's correct.
None of the other categories.
Just to spin on that point, it seems like we put some things on that list that we really didn't feel like we absolutely needed to do, and we may have moved some of those projects over to pay for, some, move money out of some of that, some of those buckets to cover some light rail, or we converted some of those projects.
We repurposed some dollars, I don't have a count of years ago, to allow us to do that, right, but we still, we still have this balance of dollars left, even after we repurposed funds from a list of projects, we were still able to, we still have this balance left.
I guess my question is, are there any glaring priorities on that unfinished list, or are they mainly the projects that we thought, you know, we really, we'd be happy not to do some of these.
Right.
I think we've identified the glaring needs, or the priorities, and it gets to that, if you want, the 86.4 million.
So to get to, do we need to kind of rush here at the end to get some things over the finish line into planning, or are we, really our priorities have been accomplished and we can?
I think, Mayor, at the end of the day, as Mr. Brady said, the challenge is, how much, how much are we willing to borrow, you know, to leverage, you know, those reimbursements that are, that are down the road, so, as we, we have a slide for that, and so this is an example, and again, as Mr. Brady said, this is just staff with its first sort of crack, you know, at projects, you know, that we've identified, but if the council were to authorize an election for $100 million bond issue, that would fund a total of 12 projects, eight of which are eligible for regional reimbursement in the amount of $48 million, if we move from 100 to 150, that adds another five projects to the total list, two of which are eligible for reimbursement, so we go from the 48 million in reimbursement to 63, but then if you go to 200 million, you know, we add a total of seven projects, but only one of those projects is eligible, you know, for reimbursement, you know, in that, so.
So, Mayor, the way I've tried to look at this, is, we still have to issue $100 million in bonds, but then we, but it really, by doing that, we get $147 million in street projects, I mean, because we don't get the reimbursement, we have to, we have to commit to the building the projects, but then it will leverage another 47 million, or if we do 150 million, and that's kind of a sweet spot right there, $150 million that we would commit to, we'd get another 63 to draw down from the region, and so that gives us a total of $210 million in projects, so.
And I get, and, you know, the more new streets, the more better, I mean, I guess that makes sense, but, on the other hand, my question, where is the sweet spot, what do we really need, as opposed to what would be nice, but not necessarily worth borrowing money for?
Right, and you see that 150, and we, it does give us a pretty significant amount of reimbursement per dollar, so that's just something that we can still have conversations about, but then, and that doesn't just include that, that's 17 projects, 10 of which are eligible, so there's still seven other projects that are the outside of that category.
So this would get us under the Prop 400 deadline?
It would get, we would have to, can you guys get them done?
Mayor, it's aggressive, but working with our engineering partners, you know, we'll get these done, you know, this, this, this becomes the priority for us.
We wouldn't, we would go to the vote, and if council were to choose, this would be a November election, and then, you know, we could begin, beginning of that, whatever, 2021, so.
We're actually in design on some projects already, anticipating, so for example, our top two priorities that staff have currently identified, being Signal Butte and Broadway, we're actually in design engineering now, so that, you know, should there be funding available for construction, we're able to move forward pretty quickly on those projects, and then we just keep going.
I'm sorry, Jeremy, did I interrupt you?
Yeah, I just have some follow-up, the math doesn't make sense for me, so help me understand what I'm missing, if you spend 70%, if you spend 30%, and then you get reimbursed 70%, I would assume that, you know, if you spent $250 million, you would roughly receive, that percentage is like 500 million, not 86.4, I'm just having a hard time understanding.
Mayor, council member Whitaker, the key here is, when you look at, say, if you're looking at the 250 million dollar line, it's a total of 27 projects, but only half of those are eligible for regional reimbursement, so we could take you project by project, you know, as Eric pointed out, it's really the street enhancement projects that are eligible for reimbursement, but the multimodal projects, you know, and some of those other things are not.
So if the ALCP projects all sunset, wouldn't it make sense to focus on the ALCP projects primarily since we're getting reimbursed 70% of the cost, and then shifting the priority of some of our other projects to a later date, or is that just not feasible, because those other projects just have to be done because they're not?
Well, again, Mayor, council member Whitaker, again, this is from a staff perspective, we think these other projects have value, obviously council sets the priority and the number, you know, of projects that are funded, but we do think outside of the ALCP projects, there's some really good projects that the city would benefit from.
Yeah, I'm just simply referring, like, to, from a financial perspective, right, so, if I assume that these ALCP projects have to be done in the next, I don't know, 10 or 15 years, would make sense for me to buy all of the ALCP projects, because I'm getting reimbursed 70% of the cost of those projects before they sunset, right, so, I guess just help me understand your perspective as to why, I mean, it seems like we're giving, we're giving away money by not taking advantage of the ALCP reimbursement.
So, Mayor and council, Whitaker, that's a good question, I think we're optimistic that the Prop 400 program will be extended, now, I'll take a vote of the county, the region, to do that, so, yes, we could rush and try to pick up every one of those projects, but I think as you see, assess all those projects, they don't necessarily all rise to being said, they really, really have to be done in the next five years, versus comparing that to some of these non-ALCP projects, well, yes, we could, we may end up leaving money on the table, I think there's a, we're not the only city, there's, everybody's kind of in that position, so I think that's part of the conversation, if we roll, if Prop 400 gets extended, or they have to get extended, how can that, these projects that are not funded under this go-around, how can they roll forward, or there are other priorities, but, to your point, we could do that, but I think as you look at the projects that are not considered ALCP, they've been identified by the community and by council members, it's also been very important, outside of just the streets, so it's just a balance, and we can take guidance from council on that, but I think, at the end of the day, the hope is that there will be, and there is a tremendous effort going on right now to make, or to extend Prop 400, and extend the sales tax and keep some of these projects going.
Yeah, I see your point, I guess then my question would be, of the ALCP projects, I get that they may not be priorities, because they don't have to be replaced in the next five years, like, maybe they're in good enough condition, but do we, do we forecast that those ALCP projects are going to have to be replaced then, in the next 10 years, the next 15 years, because my concern would be that, if we're getting free money from grants or other means, we should capitalize on that, and I guess my only concern would be if this money runs out, and then we have to do it in 10 years, well, now we're not getting reimbursed 70% of the cost, we're paying 100% of the cost, which is a substantial difference, right, so, and I don't, I'm not involved in the Prop 400 conversation, so I have no idea if we can be optimistic about that, or what that entails, but I would just hate to see all these ALCP projects come forward in seven years, eight years, 10 years, and now we got to front the entire cost of the ALCP project, rather than getting 70% of free money, it's a significant sum of money.
Mayor, council member Whitaker, an unknown is, a lot of our reimbursement is currently programmed out near the end of the current plan, and so, these are still estimates that the revenues are going to be there to support, you know, these projects, so, it, you know, for example, if there was an economic downturn, you know, that, just because it's in the ALCP, these are, it's a planning document, you know, doesn't guarantee that the funds are going to be there in 2025, you know, for reimbursement, so, you know, it's, you know, there's also capacity in terms of how many projects we literally can get done, so I think that's all part of the conversation.
So, really quick, are we, are we in a race with other cities to deplete the ALCP?
These are, these are allocations, when Prop 400 was developed, dollars were allocated to the cities, they already kind of know what their plan is, it's just that happens that a lot of our available dollars are kind of on the back end of the program, and we've been getting some along the way, I want to suggest it was all that way, so, that, everybody knows their pot of dollars, they're trying to take advantage, we just, again, going to this slide, look at this slide, so, I think what we're saying is, in the total projects of, that are ALCP eligible, there's 13 total.
Correct.
And so, even in the $150 million, we're getting 10 of those 13, so it's not like, even if we got that, and maybe we could look at, you can, we could look at the remaining three, what those, how important those would be, but even at 150, we're getting substantial amount, we're leveraging almost all of the projects except for three, so it's not quite as dire as it may appear, but I think, that, just to put in perspective, I think that's why you see our priority, priority of putting 10 of, 10 projects in early on of the 13 under that $150 million scenario.
And 13 is, I'm assuming that's the maximum, there's no, 13 is how many, that's the maximum amount of ALCP projects available?
Mayor, council member Whitaker, there's still unallotted funding that's not currently in the regional plan, or we don't have a project tied to that, that's where that extra $44 million comes from, that we, we haven't been able to identify projects yet for that extra $44 million.
And can you give me an idea of the difference, those extra three projects between the $150 million and the 250 million, what are the size of those three projects?
They're kind of in the backup, you can see.
Yeah, I go to.
Go to the end?
No, this is fine, the last three projects on this list are those three projects, so there's improvements on Southern Avenue from Gilbert Road to Val Vista, and it's low on the priority list, because we don't have a lot of capacity issues through that section of Southern Avenue, that project's really more driven by pavement condition, and then the last two projects, 13 and 14 there, are the large projects with large reimbursements, it was a power road from East Maricopa Floodway, which is just south of Guadalupe, to SR202 on the south, so the sand tan portion, and that's a joint project with Maricopa County and with Gilbert, we would be the lead agency, because we'd take it all over, so we have to front all of that money and get reimbursed, not only through, from MAG, through the ALCP, but then also from our partners, Gilbert and Maricopa County, and then the last project, Broadway Road from Country Club, Country Club to Mesa Drive, and that, that project has some benefit for traffic, but as you can see, the utilities, there's, there's quite a large utility expense there also.
And the utilities don't qualify? And the utilities don't qualify for any type of reimbursement? Those are straight out of our budget?
The only, the only way they would qualify is if we'd have to move them for part of the roadway project. But this is mostly replacement or undergrounding of electricity, then, and that does not qualify.
So the tough one is that third one because that comes directly out of our budget, right? That's an extra $3200 million you have to come up with. But line item 12 and 13 is 7.2 and 32.2 million. So that's 39.4 million, of which we would receive reimbursement of $27.5 million. So it would only actually cost us $11.8 million to do projects 12 and 13, and we would be receiving a value of almost $40 million. Am I doing that correctly?
Mayor, Councilmember Whitaker, I think to answer that question, it's not quite that simple because everything has to be eligible and we have to make sure that 70% of the project is eligible for that. And with Power Road, with having multiple municipalities, we're not going to get, we're not going to get a 70% return on $32 million because some of that's going to go back to Gilbert and to Maricopa County. The other thing, we, we do have to front all 100% of the project. We, we don't just pay 30% of the project. So we have to be able to, to cash flow the whole project and then we receive 70% back at a time, you know, whatever year we're allocated to get that project money back.
And when you say cash flow, you're referring to bonds. I mean, so we're going to take out bond debt anyway. So it would be the interest payment differential until we get that reimbursement. That would be the out of pocket expense, is that correct?
Can you say that again, sorry?
Yeah, sorry, I don't mean to confuse you. So like, we're talking about doing, not, this wouldn't actually come out of our budget because we're talking about taking out bonds to do this, right? So although we would have to front the cash, we're technically fronting cash from bonds. So we'd have to pay that interest on that bond until we were reimbursed for those ALCP projects, right?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, only if we could structure the, it's not, even an early takeout like that also. I mean, yes, in theory, you could do that. Financially structuring our bonds that way when we sell them, there are sometimes premiums when you have the earlier call dates to pay them off. And so it would take a lot of creativity for us to get there and we'd have to be absolutely certain we were getting those reimbursements. So structurally, you could, you could create a bond where you do can have early call dates and to defees portions of those bonds, but you do pay a premium for that too.
Yeah, and it doesn't seem like we have the data today and that's fine. But maybe, I would be more curious if we could do something and come back and say, well, if we prioritize these ALCP projects, here's the total amount of free money that we're receiving. And it seems, I'm getting a little, it's like, it seems vague, like we're not sure if we're getting the money, but we're supposed to get, I'm still confused.
Mayor, Councilmember Whitaker, we'll get the reimbursement, you know, that, that were due. But I think one of the questions, and I certainly won't try to talk about how bond issues are structured, but you know, a, a large chunk of this would be paid for through the secondary tax rate. So, you know, that's a conversation that I think council will need to have as well in terms of what, what comfort level you have in going to the voters.
We can come back, we'll come back with some cash flows with the, some of the assumptions built in and have that conversation.
Yeah, I'll just leave it at my last, I just don't want to give away free money, right? Like if we're going to get ALCP reimbursements of tens of millions of dollars.
We want to leverage as many, and that's why you see us in, in those two scenarios, early on, taking advantage of getting the majority of those included in the program. These last few that are not included in there, again, it was both priority as well as the wanting to also have the opportunity to bring other non-ALC projects in, multi-path, shared use, tech, infrastructure technologies, and being sensitive to the impact on the secondary property tax. So it's just, it's a balance of all those things.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, well, to, to, I think that was a nice rope, bow to put on it. But I think the point of this is to begin the conversation about a potential street bond referral to the voters.
Yes.
And at what point will we then have that discussion?
Well, so we want to kind of maybe start having a regular conversation with council. I'd like, as council, maybe as you have some thoughts and you want some additional information, or there are other projects that maybe didn't, were on this list, let's have that conversation and we can evaluate those too. And then I think we need to come back to the council regularly to start having, kind of beginning to define the package. I don't think we have to call the election until June, Deanna, or when would it be?
Ballot language has to be finalizing. Council will have to adopt that June, no later than June 15th.
So we have some time. We're going to get caught up in the budget here pretty soon. So we wanted to spend a little time now and then try to get it finalized this spring because we also need to make sure we're communicating well. And we, that's why we did Mesa Moves, but we feel like that's been a good program to keep communicating to our citizens about the, why these projects, we, you know, we're trying to respond to their concerns, but put those projects out there and also make sure that they're projects that they're interested in also. So I see us coming back multiple times, Mayor, to continue this conversation.
Okay, Frankie, did you have a question?
On the, you know, safety side, you know, with your presentation, you know, something I heard on the bike paths or the bike lanes is, is there a map of all the, the bike lanes that we have in the city? Can we, can you share that with us? Is it online?
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember Whitaker, we do have a detailed bike map we can share with you. Yes, yes.
And we get copies of it in the Visit Mesa place? There's no bike path, I refer someone?
We'll get some maps over there.
Some of the things that folks mentioned was the connectedness of, especially in West Mesa and downtown, of the bike lanes not being as connected as, as, as they would like. Folks that use bike lanes, also the safety. So I don't know if there's any best practices on increasing safety for bike lanes or, you know, new types of striping and other, other, other items like that. So I would like to kind of look at those pieces. Also, are we thinking of working with, you know, companies like Waymo? I know they mentioned they're working with several municipalities in California on mapping out streets. They, they mentioned that I think they mapped out all Mesa already via their, their vehicles as far as maintenance of, of, of our streets. So any thoughts there? And then last is, I know transit is not part of this presentation, but how's the interplay of us making a more walkable and multimodal piece and creating transit options and looking at those transit options to make placemaking opportunities for that, those pieces? So are we working with transit in, in this plan to combine those, those efforts so that we can move folks into those areas that need to use public transportation? So those are my comments there.
Councilmember Whitaker, clarification on the, on that last comment. Are these additional routes? Are you speaking about physical?
I guess it, combination of, you know, if it's additional routes, but the routes that we currently have, are we, are we, are we planning with? Because I know this did in particular look at transit, this, this project. But they interplay with each other, I think.
Sure, sure, sure.
As a, as a plan, comprehensive planning piece, how do we move people to these opportunities for them to, you know, either go use public transportation or other means? So are we thinking about in that, that sense? Because I think what we develop here has an effect on how people move utilizing transit as well, light rail and, and current routes or, you know, if Prop 400 is extended and we have more routes or we, we do other, other internal like routes here in the city, are we thinking about how we, we, we plan these, these projects to, to include, you know, those options for residents?
So, I guess, Mayor, Councilmember, really quickly, although we call it street enhancements and we talk about roadway capacity with all of our street projects when we're under design, we take into account and we look at, you know, pedestrian connections, sidewalk upgrades. Also, if there is an existing transit or bus route on that street, you know, our transit department is, is involved to look at whether there is a possibility for bus pullouts and enhanced bus stop locations to, to increase those amenities. So those are taken into account with our, our street projects.
I have a similar question. And we've had a lot of discussion today about the Prop 400 renewal. And I need to make sure, I, I do represent the council at MAG on the Transportation Policy Committee and the Regional Council where a lot of those discussions have been taking place. So maybe I need to do a better job of coming back and, and reporting on some of those discussions so that I, I make sure that, that the council's aware. But this is a big deal, obviously. The, the way that a lot of the stuff that we've been talking about here gets paid for is through Prop 400. And when it sunsets in 2025, you know, it's kind of all bets are off as far as extending transit and a lot of the, the things we've talked about. So I was, congratulations on Mesa Moves. I think it was, it was very successful. But were there things that we learned as a result of Mesa Moves that, that will help us in our Prop 400 extension campaign? Because I, I got to tell you, the west side is, is dying to get more freeways. And so they are anxious to take over all of Prop 400 renewal and have, you know, the, the money heavily shifted to the west side for State Route 30 and a lot of other projects that they think are, are critical. I don't know why the east valley would, you know, probably be overly motivated to vote for a half cent sales tax or a quarter cent sales tax to, to build freeways in the west valley. So we need to make sure that we have things in the proposal that would entice people of Mesa to, to want to extend Prop 400. So we need to, does Mesa Moves help us with that? Did we get some insights as to what we ought to be lobbying for?
Mayor, yes, I, I believe it does. You know, for example, there's a lot of emphasis on additional bike and pedestrian amenities. You know, and that's not currently an eligible funding source, you know, for, for Proposition 400. But, you know, that's part of the conversations, you know, that are ongoing. Maintenance of our existing infrastructure is big, you know, that's come out of Mesa Moves. And as I mentioned earlier, unless we can connect, you know, a reconstruction project to a safety or capacity project, you know, those are local funds, you know. So yes, I, I think that we got some valuable, you know, information that not only helps us for the near term, but helps us as, we're currently, as you're probably aware, we're putting together, working with our transit partners, sort of a, a list of potential projects. And we'll be meeting with Mr. Brady on that, so he can discuss that at the managers group. And there's, there's a lot going on.
So that would probably be good to update the council on that so that we know what projects we're submitting to MAG to be part of the, the Prop 400 extension.
Right.
Make sure that we're getting council input on that as well.
Absolutely.
I just want to clarify, if I can, John, when you say the Prop 400 extension, are we considering another half cent sales tax increase? Or is it just, we haven't been able to spend that? Would stay the same or would it actually increase another half?
That's part of the debate. The, the question is, so it sunsets in December of 2025, it goes away. And so all of the, the pot of money that's been funding transit and.
The sales tax goes away.
The sales tax.
It rolls back.
Right, it's a sunset. Right, it goes away.
So at, at the regional and at the state level, the question is, should we go to the voters and ask, we're just an extension of the same sales tax? Or here's the needs, are we, we've got 10 pounds of needs in a, in a one pound bag is what we're, we've been submitting so far to the voters. So there, there's active discussion about we need to ask for more, we need to lobby, ask the legislature and the governor and the county to support us and go into the voters asking for maybe a full cent or?
That's the discussion, yeah.
That's the discussion. And, and the political folks in the room will say that's suicide, that we don't want to increase. We want to just, we'll, we'll be lucky to just re-up for the status quo. That's probably a, a safe approach. But that's probably a discussion that we ought to have here is, what do you want me to lobby for at, at MAG? Do you want me to be aggressive and say, let's increase the sales tax? Because we have, our, our needs exceed the status quo? Or do we want to take a safer route and say, no, let's go to the voters and just ask to re-up for what we've done in the past?
Well, and Mayor, part of that challenge too is Prop 400 today pays for a lot of the ongoing operations of our transit services. And so the, the concern is that even with a half cent sales tax continuation, 25% of that we can, would, would already be absorbed just to keep what we have going. So it doesn't allow, it doesn't provide for a lot more of new things above and beyond what we, like we've done. So that's part of the discussion, is a half cent would be great, would be helpful, but at 25% of it right off the top is going to get consumed, I think it's about 25%, would be consumed by what's already happening as far as funding transit and light rail. If, and again, it would be devastating if the half cent doesn't get continued, then somewhere in local governments, you would have to absorb a significant amount of cost for transit and light rail. So that, to your point, Mayor, that's why I think there's this pressure that says, well, wait a minute, we have lots of needs. And how do we look, do we, can we come up? And maybe it's just an educational perspective of, here's what a half cent gives you, a whole cent gives you, you know, all these other things. So that is, like the mayor said, there's a lot of conversations going on at the regional level. There's different needs on the west side versus the east side versus even the central city of Phoenix, so.
Does the Prop 400 fund our parent transit services?
It's all part of.
Parent transit and some other things that we provide isn't, you know, amenity for especially those people who have difficulty navigating in traditional forms. So also, I would say a value of the Mesa Moves, you know, I know you need the input for the MAG, but I think the value also is to our city is getting that input because now we're go to our citizens and talk about bond projects and what those are. And having that feedback, I think is very critical to understanding what we're bonding for and why we're doing it and to be in that conversation. Because sometimes voters look at bond, what is this, what does this mean to me? I think being in that dialogue is really going to help us with that outreach of what we need to do on our bonds. And along that, I would like to see at some point that it makes sense is to have some kind of feedback to the community, whether through social media, you know, a video or some kind of outreach to show them, we've taken all your, your input and all your concerns and all your ideas, and this is what we're proposing in order to enhance our city. And by the way, this is the bond project that goes along with that to continue the conversation. So as we go forward, if we, I would like to see, you know, continued community input that when citizens see that their input is valued and used, it'll continue to grow and we have a, you know, a healthier way of operating, so, thank you.
Sure.
At Prop 400, I, I think I must be missing something here. So if we can't, if we're not able to allocate the current money that was from the existing Prop 400, I'm confused, like how, how are we going to push for more money? Am I missing, like, are we, we're not able to spend the capital today that Prop 400 allocates using our street improvements, right? Like my understanding is we're, some of these are going to sunset and we're going to miss out on some dollars. But then we're trying to keep extending Prop 400 when we're not spending what we already have. I think I'm missing, I think I'm not understanding correctly.
It's a fair point. I think at the end of the program, there will be a pot of dollars, not just from Mesa, from many cities, that will be unspent. But a part of that is just because it's at the end of the cycle and all the cities having to come up with their full 100% you know, commitment to get it done within the last five years. The cities have been spending the money down. There's a lot of projects that, I don't know, Mr. Bell, if you can remind me, four years ago, three or four years ago, they had to do a rebalancing of the whole program because the sales tax are coming in like 20, I forget how short they're coming in. So there's just a lot of moving parts. I don't, I don't know what's going to happen if there are residual dollars sitting there at the end. But I think that's part of this conversation is what will happen with those projects with dollars that are still attached to it.
Mayor and Councilmember Whitaker, Chris is right. I mean, if you think of the scale and the scope of Prop 400 overall, it's a multi-billion dollar project. So what you're seeing with the South Mountain Freeway, what you're, what you're seeing with expansions of the Loop 202, State Route 24, all of that is funded with Prop 400. Then you put transit into that of which, from the city, approximately 50% of our transit service is, is funded with Prop 400. The ALCP portion of that, of course, is what we're focused on today. But that is. But that is, in the grand scheme of things, a much smaller portion of this multi-billion dollar pot. And a lot of the discussion, Councilmember, goes right to that. On the freeway side, there's hundreds of millions of dollars, it's fair, no, let me correct that, there are billions of dollars of needs. Even just a redo, for example, of the I-17 through Phoenix is projected at about $3 billion. So this is one slice of a huge pie that we're talking about overall. And so, Councilmember Whitaker, to your point, I think a lot of the regional focus, when you talk, you know, when you hear chambers and others talk about this, it's on the highway and the transit side. We do, we did a great job of leveraging a lot of local dollars for our street network. We, I think we have more than any city, including Phoenix, for ALCP dollars. So we did a good job, and this predates many of us, we did a good job of getting those dollars regionally when Prop 400 was put together. So that, that's what drives the discussion. So when you, when you correctly say, Councilmember Whitaker, that other cities, we've done a good job because we have had street bonds, but if you look at other communities, I was about to single out some, but I won't, who have a larger pot of ACLP, ALCP dollars that they're trying to draw down, it's pennies on the dollar, I hate to put it that way, but pennies on the dollar to an overall multi-billion dollar regional transportation plan.
So do you have any idea what happens to our unused funds in the ALCP program if we don't spend them?
So those dollars will be collected. My assumption is, and MAG has not, Mayor Cooper Association of Governments has not set a policy yet for what would happen in that case. What I can, I think reasonably expect would be that that pot of money would be, would be set aside at the end of the program. Because again, it's already been collected.
As long as it's been collected, as long as that's some out, collected, yeah.
Yeah, so that, so at the end of, when the program ends on December 31st, 2024, whatever is left in Mesa's allocation would likely stay with the city of Mesa to draw down that funding. That has not been a formal policy. That would be my expectation is that, would you, is that fair to say, RJ, probably from the discussions that you've had?
I think it's fair to say, but also, as Scott points out, Mesa has done a very good job of using its ALCP funds. So when you, when you see the dollars, I mean, obviously, they look big, but we can speak to just that, a number of communities, you know, they didn't have a 2013, you know, bond or election or ways, you know, to cover the match. So we're actually on an annual basis, it's called closeout, you know, if we have projects that are ready for reimbursement and there's money that other cities haven't been able to spend, where we can, we try to get our reimbursements early that we can then use for another project. So we're very active in trying to manage our part of the program.
Yeah, and to be clear, I'm not criticizing you for not doing a great job. I'm just saying, if there's free money coming in, we should be taking advantage of it.
Understood.
Right.
I think we're, I think the question point, Mayor and Councilmember Whitaker, is we'll be well positioned if we can get a package together, bond package, at this timing with the, kind of the term, the ending of the program. I think we'll be in a good position relative to the rest of the region to draw down as much as we can. And then I think, I think Scott's right, if, at the end of the day, you know, our capacity and a sensitivity to how it impacts our citizens from a taxing perspective, if we don't get the full advantage of it in this go around, I mean, we could see us doing, you know, we try to come back every five to six years and do another bond package. I could see us then drawing down these dollars pretty quickly after that. So whether they're in a, because there's always going to be an ALCP project out there that we're going to need, we just have to get it defined correctly and make sure it meets all the criteria. And there's a conversation too, right, for the next round is, what are those criteria going to be for ALCP projects? Right now, I mean, Eric kind of described the regional criteria, I think there's a push to kind of adjust those. And maybe even the percentages, the leveraging, the 70/30 may change too. So it may be to our advantage to kind of watch and see how that conversation takes place also.
Yeah, and that was my other point, is like, as we push forward through MAG on Prop, the extension of Prop 400, does it make more sense for us to push for an allocation of that money to go towards operation and maintenance or whatever to some extent versus capital improvement projects?
If you have that conversation, I think it becomes, from a regional standpoint, I think there's, there's a lot of debate about that, whether that, there is a lot of concern, especially about freeway maintenance. I think when you get down to the local streets, certainly communities would like to have it that way. I don't know, Mr. Butler, can we get on that? There's just a lot of debate from communities about whether this should be a maintenance program or whether it should be a capital program to expand capacity within the entire system.
Right. Mayor, Councilmember Whitaker, I think Chris captured that correctly. You, you see a lot of divide, I think it's fair to say, between more mature cities and those that are younger with a less developed street network, even though we certainly have those challenges out in District 6 and some in District 5. We're certainly have a much more robust network than other fast, newer, smaller, faster-growing communities in that regard. So you're, you have some that love the system because frankly, it benefits them, others who might see that there's more opportunity for street maintenance and, and I don't know, like Mr. Brady said, I don't know which way the region's going to go on this. It's going to be part of this overall larger negotiation and discussion. But I know our policy objective is to give as much flexibility to the city as possible. We, we would like to see local control, in the sense Mesa be able to really set the criteria of how we use-
To allocate it however you see fit.
Right. But remember, we have to go to the state legislature, the county supervisors, sometimes their perspectives are different.
Gotcha.
So, thank you. We'll include council in all these discussions, and this is a timely time to begin those conversations. But for Prop 400 to be extended, the legislature has to authorize the election.
Yep.
Typically, in the past, they've deferred that to the county board of supervisors to call the election. The governor needs to not veto the legislation authorizing the election. So you've got already three stakeholders that are going to, before we get a chance to vote on this, that have got to sign off on the idea of either re-upping the tax or quote unquote, increasing the tax. And then we've got to decide, do we want to roll the dice because the stakes are so high of asking for more or keeping it status quo? So there's, there's a lot of, you know, meaty topics here to discuss. And we're kind of at the beginning of that conversation and I'll make sure that this council is involved in the policy decision that we take back to MAG representing Mesa.
I know this is Ryan Long, but I got two other questions if I could.
Okay.
How do, how do these different options compare to the CIP that we approved? That's, the council's currently approved. What are we assuming for that?
Mayor, Councilmember, I'd have to go and look, as part of this, there are, there are new projects that are currently not in the CIP that were identified either with the Southeast Mesa Land Use and Transportation Plan or that came out of the Mesa Moves Initiative. But what has been approved by council, as far as those projects, those projects are also included in this list.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm assuming you guys are sort of asking us, you know, what amount do we feel comfortable with, right? That's kind of like these, these four different options. And I'm, in my mind, I'm just trying to understand from a whole budgetary perspective, what does our current budget assume? What is our current cash flow analysis for the next five years? Which option is it, that's assumed in the budget?
Well, because these are second, this is a whole new authorization, I don't think we've built into our, we may have a capital budget, but they would have been under the unfunded project. So once we come up with this list of projects that would be, go through an authorization, they would transition eventually from being unfunded CIP to funded CIP. So right now, if they're in the CIP, they would be listed as either unfunded or future bonds.
Future bonds.
Future bonds. So they're not calculated in any assumed cash flow right now. What we'll need to do is come back to council and share with you the impact of these authorizations on a tax, on a future tax levy.
Yeah, so that, that's my second question, is if we approve these different bond sizes, you know, obviously, we have to then pay the principal interest on them. What's that impact to our annual budget, right? Like, so 100 million, and I don't, sure, that's 100 million dollars, but I don't, as a council, I don't know how, how do we decide between these four options if we don't know what that impact is to our annual operating budgets?
Right. So when we come back in the future, we will go with you, we'll explain to you what the secondary property tax levy impact will be. That's the sole source of the funding for these projects.
Okay. And do you have a ballpark, like, for every 100 million dollars?
I want to say the 100 million was around 24, 25 dollars? Oh, is it, Ryan? Oh, you got it. He's got it. Never mind.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I'm Ryan Wimmer, the City Treasurer, and I manage the city's property tax levy. The annual impact of a 100 million dollars to the median homeowner in the city of Mesa would be 26 dollars a year.
And what's the impact to our general fund operating budget? What does that total cost?
Mayor, Councilmember Whitaker, the, if you're asking about the operational impact, I don't know that we have those numbers. There is no, there is no, there's no impact to the cost of the projects because that's all covered by the secondary property tax. So we would increase the property tax levy to pay for the entire cost of the debt service for these projects.
Well, you may, you could argue, some of these projects are greenfield projects, they don't exist today or, and some of them are reconstructs of arterials that exist today. So in effect, it could have, at least for that section, a lessening effect, impact on operations because we would, we'd be building a brand new road, we wouldn't be having to do-
I got you. Sorry, I got confused. So your point is, it's just a secondary property tax, so it would all be categorized and paid for out on its own?
Yes.
And it would have zero impact on our general funds? I just mixed it up. Okay, I appreciate it, Ryan. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm sure we'll have many more discussions on the topic. Next item, Item 1C is to hear a presentation and discuss the city's three-year comprehensive review of the adopted general plan, its policies and implementation tools.
I think that was good, wait till this one.
Welcome, planning team.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. As part of the implementation of our general plan, the city is required to conduct a three year evaluation of how the implementation tools are helping to achieve the goals set out in the general plan and also make recommendations for any adjustments that may be needed to continue to pursue the goals outline. So with that, we are going to present to you the evaluation for the past three years, the successes that we've been able to achieve and also recommendation for certain adjustment. And with me is Tom, who is a principal planner in our division, and Rachel Prellwood.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. So as Nana introduced, today, we're going to be talking to you about the general plan and some proposed amendments that we have for the general plan as part of that comprehensive review. So as an introduction, I'm just going to go over kind of a brief explanation about what the general plan is and what its purpose is, and then go into what the comprehensive review does. And then from there, talk about some of the accomplishments that we've seen in implementing the plan, and then go into a discussion about some of the challenges and how those really tie into some of the recommendations that we're going to be bringing forward for amendments to the plan. So a general plan, it's really a policy document that guides the future actions of a city. It sets the vision for the city with the long-range goals and policies that help direct how the city views development, land use, transportation, economic development, pretty much every aspect of how the city functions. But the general plan, it also provides that cohesiveness over time so that as council changes, as you have staff turnover, that you have a standard framework for decision-making. So by state law, we're required to provide an annual review of the plan implementation efforts to council. But in addition to that, the general plan in Chapter 16 requires a comprehensive review to occur every three years to look at the policies and strategies. And that gives the opportunity for staff to make recommendations to council on any sort of text amendments that might be appropriate and any amendments to any of our land use tools. So as part of that process, what we do is we look at the successes of the plan and we look at some of the challenges that we've experienced implementing the plan. So on my next few slides, I'm going to have examples of some of the successes around the city. And I'm going to say, I watched the mayor's state of the city address, so I'm not going to go into detail about these projects because I'm not going to do quite the job that he did explaining these. But what I would like to do is kind of tie back how the general plan informs those successes and how those policies are really the, how they, how these successes are the physical manifestation of our policies and goals. So in the, in the general plan, there's three main goals, and these aren't in any particular order, but one is to grow stable and diverse jobs. Another one is to provide rich, high-quality public spaces and cultural resources. And the last one is to create and maintain a variety of great neighborhoods. So some of the strategies that you'll see implemented through these examples on the screen is for economic development. One of the policies is to look at preserving commercial and industrial areas for job growth. Another one is to have a business-friendly service approach to help maintain, attract, and, you know, promote expansions of local business. And, you know, another one is to look at the promotion of our infrastructure, both transportation and communication, and how those contribute to the exchange of information and commerce. So for public spaces and cultural resources, some of the main policies are the redevelopment of public spaces. There's the requirement that any new development provide public spaces with their, with their development that's commensurate with its size and location. And another important one is encouraging the co-location of facilities when possible. So I believe on the screen, this really shows, there's an example of each one of those where we've had a lot of redevelopment of our public parks. We have facilities where there's really that co-location of cultural resources and programming such as the Feasible Forest and the Farmer's Market that's occurring in Pioneer Park. And then we have, you know, the great new, great new parks like East Smart Great Park that, that's part of new subdivisions that are being created throughout the valley. For creating great neighborhoods, some of those policies are to provide a mixture of uses that really provide the goods and services for residents, to encourage infill and redevelopment to maintain neighborhoods, and then to have a historic preservation component that really looks at maintaining and preserving our past. And lastly, I'd like to point out that these, these policies and strategies, they really span these topics and areas throughout the city. And I think that downtown is a really great example of that because it really is the, you know, the manifestation of your public spaces, your neighborhoods, and your employment areas. And so we've seen a lot of great redevelopment and reinvigoration in downtown and those local businesses. We have, you know, the creation of new neighborhoods and especially a lot coming up on the horizon here. And then, and just we see Mesa kind of transforming into this cultural and educational hub. So to go into some of the challenges that we have experienced, the first one I want to talk about is in regards to character area designations. So this current general plan is a little bit of a departure from our last general plans that focused really on parcel-specific land uses. And when we adopted this plan in 2014, we kind of ventured away from that and we're focusing more on the character of an area, you know, wanted to think about what it feels like, give it more flexibility for what could be developed there. So what we're looking for is really a mixture of uses to provide some vibrancy, to create that sense of place, and then to provide goods and services so that people weren't so dependent on, you know, automobile. But what we've seen for some of the challenges in this is, particularly with the mixed-use designation, is that, you know, the vision is really for a mixed-use product that's integrated. So both, you know, it could be horizontal or vertically. But what we've seen from development is that they're coming in with proposals that are solely for the secondary use of what that's intended to be. So the plan doesn't have really a well-defined standards for how much should be the primary use, how much should be the secondary use. But they, you know, back to the intent is really to have that mixture. But what we see is that they're coming in and saying, well, it's allowed to have residential use here, so I want to build a subdivision. Well, that's not a mixed-use product, there's no commercial component. Well, that's not a mixed-use product. There's no commercial component or you have, you know, a very lacking commercial component that doesn't interact with this subdivision. On the screen before you, this is existing.
Excuse me, I think Mr. Reddy has a question.
Quick question on the secondary use. Can you can you explain that if like a residential has like some other amenity? Could you explain the secondary use of the mixed-use piece that we're we're encountering?
Sure. So if you, I mean, if you think about mixed-use development, I think the first thing that comes to your mind is that it is kind of this commercial atmosphere that has the integration of residential within it. So that residential really is that supporting element to the commercial to create that distinct environment. So that would be an example of what we would consider a secondary use. So that really is kind of subsidiary to the larger commercial component of it.
Sure. But what we're seeing.
Is the reverse.
The reverse.
Right.
It was dominated by the residential with a sprinkling of the commercial. And so we we're concerned that this mixed-use has kind of gotten a inverse application, I guess.
Or are they applying different types of mixed-use that we just it's not even commercial? It's something else that it's or is that even?
Well, when I say commercial, I would lump in like office use in that as well. We're just seeing a lack of that commercial component where it's really they're seeing that residential isn't allowed use within the mixed-use character designation. And so the positive is, well, I can develop that for residential.
Question on that. I think mixed-use has kind of become code for residential, I think, I guess, in some people's eyes. Right, the development community. So and sometimes we see situations where we we greenlight the residential component of a neighborhood development and the commercial development is kind of left for the future. And then ultimately, inevitably, it seems like the developer will come back and say, well, you know, we tried for X number of years and it just never worked, so we need to rezone this now and and you need to relieve us of the obligation to have a commercial component here. It seems like more recently, we've been telling the development community, this is mixed-use. We're not going to trigger the residential until you've completed or invested in the commercial. Is that?
That that's a perfect example of what we're seeing. And I think in recent times, what you're seeing is the use of development agreements to kind of enforce that that commercial development before the residential comes in. But that's part of what we're going to be talking about for recommendations of how we can address that through the comprehensive plan so that we have the policy behind us to really enforce that more because as the plan it is right now, it's it's not it's not very explicit of how much has to be the primary use, how much should be the secondary use, when they should come in. So there really is a lot of that struggle back and forth with the development community about what we can enforce and what we can't. Yeah.
Thank you.
I know Vice Mayor Freeman is looking at me smiling because that has been the conversation we've been having for the past six weeks or even more than six weeks where, yes, we are meeting every week to have this discussion.
Okay.
I didn't bring it up, Nana, but since you did, you know, it's like we have these wrestling matches with these developers about what they feel is the best planning for these areas versus what's the general plan's expectations. And so how do you compromise on all aspects and develop a neighborhood village plan and your commercial and your mixed-use and and all that? That's been very contentious in a way. And we're still having conversations. We don't have any resolve on it. And consequently, it's just it's frustrating everybody. However, had a conversation yesterday afternoon on it. And we'll have more, right, Nana?
That's correct.
So thank you. I'm just kind of venting a little bit, but thank you for that.
So the diagram, the chart we have on the screen before you, this is the existing land use of various communities throughout the valley. And this is data that you get from the MAG. This is latest data from 2017. But what I think is really interesting about this chart is how it relates to the kind of opposing narrative that we hear about residential development in Mesa. Because on one hand, you hear that we have this overabundance of residential use and that we don't have the commercial and the employment that other cities around us do and that we're just this bedroom community. And then on the other hand, you have, you know, development pressure coming in saying, you don't have enough residential. We need to convert some of this, you know, land designated for other uses for residential. But as you can see on the screen, we we really have less residential than several other communities in the region. And we have a comparable amount of commercial and employment-based uses, especially if you if you're looking at this transportation, this gray box up here. All of our airports are included in this, which is a big industry in Mesa. So.
Excuse me, I think Mr. Luna has a question.
Sure.
So I have a question relative to the balance. So how many in terms of commercial, industrial, jobs, employment versus residential, what is the appropriate balance?
There's no magic number.
Okay.
Yeah.
You know, and and the reason why I'm talking about that is we we deal with homelessness in our in our communities throughout the United States. And there's there seems to be an imbalance in terms of what kind of residential units are available for for people to live in. So that's something that we're going to have to navigate through as we move forward, that we want to make sure that we do have sufficient housing, but we want to make sure we have sufficient jobs for that.
And I don't think this chart goes to the affordability or the types of it. You know, because like Gilbert's at 54% residential, but I suspect it's probably the least affordable of most of these cities. So this is only just an allocation of use. We could drill down further into those other conversations about inside a residential, how do you layer that as far as, you know, the cost of of that housing? How does that compare? I mean, it is an issue. I don't know that this you could derive that out of this chart.
Sorry.
Yeah, I have one question related, and I know it's not your intent right here, but just from many conversations, there's a lot of interest in people doing shipping container housing, tiny homes, ADUs, things like that. And are we working on some kind of zoning or something that makes that? I know in the Form B base code area, we have more flexibility. But are we overall as a city looking at options in order to accommodate those so they don't get caught in the long process?
Mayor, Council, so one of the slides that we're going to discuss with you is our implementation tools and our recommendation for certain tax amendment. And so I can discuss that. But some of the things we're looking at is example smaller development. So in the past years, we've been looking at the ways to encourage smaller development, especially in densely populated areas, to encourage that kind of density, which in a way will possibly also lead to affordability in that sense. But we would I can talk about that when we get to that slide.
Frankie, real quick, as far as the commercial, is that retail embedded in that space or?
Yes.
Is it mostly retail or is there other types of commercial as well?
Well, they have a specific category for commercial. And then, of course, there's mixed use and office. So they kind of it spans a couple of different uses, I would say.
So retail can be in a couple different categories here?
I think retail would be under commercial.
Under commercial, solely under commercial.
Sorry, I didn't understand what you're asking.
Okay, okay.
You know, I think we could spend the whole morning talking about this slide. It's because it's fascinating. And every zoning case we get and every person that walks in your door, I mean, this this slide is relevant to all those discussions. We have a problem in Mesa in that we are the lowest sales tax collection city. And for a city that doesn't have a primary property tax, that's not a good thing. So we need to figure out ways to get more sales tax, to have more more mouse drops in our city. At the same time, we're seeing a lot of requests for residential developments, multifamily. I mean, we're all understand there's a housing shortage right now. There's there's pressure on creating more housing. And so people could be reasonably asking the question, all of these high-end apartment complexes that are coming in now, are we getting out of balance if, you know, all of our zoning cases now are multifamily? And so this this graph, I think, is relevant to that. So I'm going to suggest that maybe during our strategic planning session or that we set some time aside to answer the question, what is is this the makeup that we like? Or would we like to tweak things in some direction?
Absolutely. So the the next slide I'm going to present, this is this goes into the allocation of our character areas. So as the last slide, we were looking at the existing land use. This goes into the character area designations and what is considered our kind of future land use guidance. So when we were in the previous slide, we saw that we had a roughly 43% residential. But as far as character area designations throughout our growth area, we have 61% of of land available for residential development. So there still is plenty of room to grow there. And I think the the message that we want to get across that as as staff, we really are concerned with preserving these employment areas, these mixed-use areas for that commercial and job-related use. And don't feel like there is need to really convert areas over to residential when we have sufficient amounts.
So Mayor, this may be answering your question. So maybe we could stack this so that we could put this circle, what the general plan says our character should look like versus the previous one, right? Which is saying, this is what it is. So you have the Mesa stack of 2017 versus the donut, whatever, of here's what the general plan says. So when you ask the question strategically, what does the council, what is the community actually voted on? Is this slide, whatever slide this is, but this general plan, character areas, that's that's the that's what the general plan is suggesting, if that makes sense.
So this is that build-out, what the voters have suggested they want the city to look like?
Yeah, this is the, right?
Okay, Frankie.
Is this also via zoning, what we have as far as zoning, as you mentioned? Or what is the zone in place for neighborhood residential? Is this pie or?
So this doesn't go into the actual zoning because the character areas can include several different zoning designations within them. We could probably try to figure out how that looks.
Mayor, Council, with the current area designation, we have undeveloped areas as well. It becomes very critical whenever those development comes in where sometimes they need to rezone. So one of the criteria is to make sure whenever we are recommending approval for rezoning, it needs to match or be consistent with the general plan, which means it needs to be consistent with a character designation. So whenever the area is designated example as employment and there is a reasoning request to go residential, this is where we stick to the general plan to say the character designation is meant to be employment. That's usually where we can actually continue to achieve the percentages that you see here for the character designations.
Okay, so to move on into some of our recommendations is for the character area designations in Chapter 7 of the general plan is really to clarify the role of primary uses and how they contribute to creating that character. So as we were talking about, what is a primary, what is a secondary? Right now, it's not specific in the general plan. It just has, you know, a typical list of land uses. So going in there and either setting up a priority for the, you know, the development and implementation of those areas with primary uses, setting up possibly kind of a ratio, what's appropriate. Those are things that we want to explore and to bring back to you to discuss at a later date. Another challenge that we have seen is with our amendment procedures and criteria. And this really does play just right into what Nana was talking about, how how you're zoning.
I'm sorry, I think Mr. Freeman has a question before you move on.
Sure.
I have a 10-second relapse, so going back. When you do the your last slide there, do you reach out to the landowners at all and discuss with them their the land, possible land uses and zonings and stuff for their properties?
For the general plan?
Yeah, for the general plan. When we reach out to the general plan, we're affecting landowners.
It's a massive process. It goes to the voters.
So, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, the overall process for creating the general plan and as it goes to the ballot, it was a significant outreach effort to what those would be. We held neighborhood meetings within every area of the city. We took into account different property owners. You meet with different stakeholders from the economic development side. It all goes into what that planned land use allocation is. So in that regard, we have that that discussion with them. As developers come in to discuss development on specific parcels of land, we then go back into this general plan and have those land use discussions again. And what we're discussing here today is as we have those discussions on some of these character areas, we've identified, going to Councilmember Heredia's comment, there are specific in the in Chapter 7, it talks about secondary and primary uses, and there are zoning categories that implement those. What's lacking in that discussion is how much is primary and what is that that mixture that goes on with specifically within our mixed-use activity districts? So that's where we find that challenge as we're discussing it with the developers. Whereas the discussion prior was it was open to the city and we we did an extensive outreach to try to to meet with those who actually own the property and what the planned vision for the city is. So as you look at our land use allocation, it actually is meeting those three basic goals of the general plan. If you look at the the bigger sections, you've got the neighborhoods, the employment, and the parks and how those interplay. And so it's really that discussion as we that we have with the developers as they come forward to discuss it with us.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we were talking about the general plan amendment procedures. And this goes back to a comment that Nana had made previously about how when you have a rezone, it requests that it has to be in compliance with your general plan. That's state law. So we have amendments come forward often when when we have these proposals that are in compliance with those character areas. That's when you see your general plan amendments coming through. Some of the challenges that we've had with that is that the qualifiers for what constitutes a major versus a minor amendment, it's pretty ambiguous. And there's also a lot of discretion that's left to the planning director, which, you know, as as a city, we, you know, we always want to promote some predictability and consistency. So that's one thing that we want to look at. And another issue is that the the qualifiers or the kind of criteria, what determines a major versus a minor, it doesn't consider the context of an area. And so this is why I have these two maps up on the screen here showing downtown versus southeast Mesa. And what we have in the yellow highlighted areas, this is what is the cutoff right currently for a minor versus major, which is 320 acres. So as you can see, you know, the context of 320 acres in your your established core, your developed part of the city is very different than, you know, out east, undeveloped, where there's no infrastructure yet. And then on the flip side of that, we have this blue box, and this is a city block in downtown, which is about 10 acres is an average city block. And if you think about the effect of changing the character area of a city block, that is, you know, that's a big impact in downtown. Whereas if you were out east and it's on the corner here, that might not be very significant. So how do you address those differences? So.
Mr. Reddy.
Is maybe I'm confusing this, but as far as the establishment of redevelopment zones, does that help when you're talking about, you know, urban areas to vacant areas like this this example? Or is that separate that we look as far as there's where you're saying there the their current makeup is, you know, in order to develop these areas per this example, it there's it's the same criteria that we have or do other things overlay? I'm just looking at this example. I'm trying to understand what because it's very different development that will happen in the urban core to what you see at LEA where there's nothing, right? So.
Exactly. And so what what this is showing is that what qualifies to do an amendment, what we consider being a major versus a minor amendment, they're the same no matter where you are in the city.
No matter.
But that as you're speaking to, that's very different in your developed urban core than it is out east. So as part of the recommendations, we'd like to adjust that those qualifiers or that criteria that determines what's a major versus a minor. And we also are recommending to establish approval criteria so that when we are evaluating these general plan amendments and then when council is considering their approval or denial, that there is some basis for decision-making there.
Mayor, Council, as part of the evaluation, as I said earlier on, we are supposed to look at our implementing tools or tools that help us achieve the goals of the general plan. So some of the tools is basically the implementation or the implementation of the requirements of the zoning ordinance. So as part of that, in. So, as part of that, in the past year, we've been looking at setting tools that we think if when, if when it's enhanced in the zoning ordinance, it will help us to achieve those goals. And couple of them, you've already approved. So, one of them was last week, you did actually approve introduction of a new zoning district, which was a leisure and recreation. And also, you did approve the requirement to make parking standards in the form-based code area optional. Some of the major projects that we are currently working on are looking into streamlining. One is site plan reviews. So, if you look at most of the cities around here, site plan reviews are actually approved administratively. Site plan reviews are very straightforward. You either, they use the site allowed, or it's not. The standards, you either have to meet the standards or not. So, in the past, we've had several conversations with the planning and zoning board, and they keep asking, why do they look at site plans when all the cities actually around here do apply, do approve site plans administratively? In addition to that, it will help reduce the time that site plan actually goes through. Right now, we have about three to four months. But when they're coming in, they meet all the standards or requirements that could be approved within 30 days, which is with our performance measures or our review period for site plan review. So, those are the, one of the things we're looking at, and we will be coming back to you with our recommendation. We also continue to have that discussion with the development community, with residents, and with the planning and zoning board. Another thing we're looking at right now, we have about four processes for just subdivision approvals. We've looked around, most of the cities around here actually have two processes. So, we think and believe that there is room to actually compress the processes, make it more simple, and also reduce the timeline that you have to go through to actually get applied, approved. So, we are looking into streamlining that process to reduce the timeline, make it more understandable, more simple. So, we'll be coming to you with that. Another thing is, as I said earlier, to Councilmember, that was your question, we are looking into smaller development. That's one of the things we are actually coordinating with transportation, solid waste, and all that, to really find a way to make sure there is opportunity for smaller development that are also quality development that can withstand the test of time. We continue to have that meetings, and we are also talking to the development community. We have a stakeholder group that we've been meeting to come up with criteria and standard as well. We also did receive $20,000 from the State Historic Preservation Office to look at our design, design standards for historic properties. So, we did have design standard back in 1998. It's been a while now, and what we are going to be looking into is basically coming up with guidelines to help those in the historic district to be able to pursue any repairs, or just to help them get understanding and what they can do, what they cannot do, or what, what are the things that they can actually do to enhance their properties as well. So, we are working on that. You also basically approved $50,000 for historic preservation work. So, we will be, the $20,000 is a matching grant, so we'll be working together with the money that you allocated for historic preservation. We are also looking at adaptive reuse. As we all understand, there are several areas in Mesa that are going to redevelop. So, what are the things that we can actually do as a city to encourage those redevelopment, remove obstacles that sometimes become an impediment for those areas to be able to develop? So, we are also working into that. We are looking at major surrounding cities around here, and even in the nation, what are their adaptive reuse policies or standards? So, we'll be coming to you for that. And then, the last thing I'll talk about is assisted living standards. There's been conversation as to what are the right location, locations for these uses? So, what we're looking into is looking at our whole city to see what are the prime locations, and how those prime locations can be protected for commercial and employment-related uses, and not being taken out by users that are good for the city, but their location may not result in the highest and best use as well. So, those are several things that we're looking into. We are going to be having several discussions with residents, the development community, with the planning and zoning board, with the historic preservation board, and we'll come to you at a later date of all the results and our findings for directions as well. So, with that, we'll be ready for any questions you have.
Well, if you don't mind, I think you're going to have to get some questions on that last slide. So, thank you. This is a very ambitious, ambitious list. And so, you're, you're saying during the, this year, you're going to come to us with all of these projects, or all of these suggested perhaps changes to some of our policies?
There, there's, there's a lot of, I won't, we continue to aggressively work on it, but we'll update you as time goes on of this.
I get it. It's your goal to come with all of these. And that, because it is ambitious, I'm saying, wow, that, you're biting off a lot there, because, I mean, group home standards, assisted living standards, those are things that we've been asking about for a while. And I, it, as you know, the pressure from the development communities, you, you see it more than we do. But that, that's an impressive list. Now, the, the leisure and recreation zoning and form-based code parking, those are, are great because you've already accomplished those, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Great. I'm sorry, were there more questions on that?
Well, I just had to comment. Thank you for bringing forward all these changes in how we look at our planning and zoning of our city. I think it'll really move us up in being progressive in the way that we look at developing our city, and giving us more of a sense of identity that I think we don't have compared to other cities. So, we're really upping our game. And so, thank you for bringing these forward. I think it'll help us, not only with the developers, but, you know, our image as a city. I'm getting back to the small lot development guidelines. But I also wanted to look at allowing the ADUs on existing lots. You know, are we doing something on that to make a streamlined process for residents who want to put a secondary, given that it's appropriate for their area? If they're not in a form-based code, that might be prohibitive. And as people are looking for their mother-in-law, please, or, you know, areas, a lot of families are consolidating now with the cost of housing, and it makes it more affordable and flexible. So, to be more friendly in those, in those applications are, thank you.
Thank you.
Great. I'm sorry, Frankie.
Real quick, maybe a process question. How, how do other planning documents, like what we're doing with the Housing Master Plan and, you know, other, other, other items that we also go into and ask residents input and, and other stakeholders inform, kind of this general master plan?
So, this, yeah.
This is a great question, because this plan, even when we're developing the general plan that goes to vote, and I think even here, it references, I don't know, all the transportation plan, the housing plan, the park master plan, what else, Tom? So, it, it becomes kind of the master plan, where everything else kind of feeds into it. Yeah.
And as, as we enter new planning, do we have to update this? Or you, you mentioned, Joe, I think we, we update it every year, or every three years? But is it based on those plans that get updated?
Yeah.
Through them, we go back and make adjustments to, to this plan?
Mayor Council, so there are three requirements. One is we are required to do annual review. That's a state law. So, we do that every year, where we evaluate the performance of the general plan, and sometimes we come to you for certain policy adjustment. And then, we are, the general plan in itself, which is very Mesa-specific, requires a three-year comprehensive review. So, that's what we're also doing today. And then, there is a state requirement that every 10, 10 years, we need to look at a general plan. That's when we do the overhaul, basically. Well, if that's the need to do the overhaul, to really just probably change certain direction because of changing trends as well. So, those are the three requirements. So, most of the time, we don't wait. We anticipate or through our interaction and the trends happening, we come to you for certain recommendations. So, that's, this time does.
I know this isn't your question, but when is the master housing plan, the recommendation going to be presented? Is it in March?
Is that what your plan is then?
March?
Not in March, she says.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Are you, did that complete the presentation?
I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Jeremy.
When we talk about like the smaller housing lots and like the density, how do you guys find the balance between creating like a congregation of impoverished areas versus creating affordable housing, right? Because I get the fact that we have homelessness issues, and we need to create more affordable housing, but at the same time, how do we make sure that we're not creating this dense area of just poverty, I guess?
Mayor Council, so when we're talking about smaller development, it's not necessarily affordable housing. While we're looking at basically missing middle, so example, there is a case that is going to come before you, where it's, it's a smaller development, but their proposed housing value or the rent or the price of their homes is actually kind of your median house, but it's for missing middle, young professionals who, example, are not ready yet to move into your big houses with big laws. So, the quality of the development is also critical here. So, when we talk about smaller development, those are all the things that we're looking at as well, and not just encouraging substandard housing, if that's your question.
Um, I, I'm not sure. I guess, I, you know, I think I've discussed this in the past, but if I go drive through older neighborhoods that are 30, 40, 50 years old, and I see the ones that are still nice and have manicured lawns and, you know, nice areas, versus when I drive through other areas where I wouldn't probably want to go at nighttime, it appears to me that there's a correlation between the density of the amount of housing in the area that causes that, right? Like, if it's a bigger plot of land, then it's going to attract somebody that has more money to go move into that area and take care of their, take care of their house. So, I'm not sure how my question pertains to this specifically, but my biggest concern is to making sure that whatever we do here today, that we don't turn around in 50 years and say, well, why did we do that in 2020? And now, we have these dense areas, poverty, right?
Yeah, we, yeah. It's the sustainability of it. And that's, and I think Nana mentioned that, we've got to figure out the balance of increase, allowing density. And we're seeing that now. And we have these high-density developments, infill developments taking place today, which present issues about, like you said, the quality of development, but also about parking, about infrastructure, how we get our infrastructure to the property, where our ride, where our easements are, how we pick up the garbage. And we've, so we've been going through this. And so, we want a development, whether it's multifamily or small density, that's going to be sustainable for a long period of time. So, we've got to figure out what are those qualities, those characters that we can build into the development that will allow for that.
Yeah, and I guess that would be my request, is to maybe go to some of these older cities that have the high density, you know, whether it's, I'm assuming a ton of them are on the East Coast, because that's where they build up and not out. But, you know, analyzing the qualities or the character of what makes those communities sustainable versus what doesn't, because, again, you know, I hate to turn around in 20 or 30 years and say, well, we created this dense plan, and now we've got this entire impoverished area. So, I, I, I know you guys will already take care of it, but I just want to extend my concerns about making sure that we're cognizant of that.
Thank you. Yeah. Thank you very much. Any other questions, Council? All right. Thank you very much. Next item on our agenda is to hear reports on meetings and conferences attended. Mr. Luna?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I had the opportunity to, to attend through the National League of Cities with Tech for America over in Santa Clara Valley. So, it was quite interesting, and hopefully, we can implement some of those ideas. So, I had an opportunity to visit Apple, Autodesk, Kaufman Foundation, Postmates, Thumtac, and Zillow, and they have a number of great ideas and opportunities that we might want to incorporate here in the city of Mesa. Also, on Monday, since I'm the Chair of Hilo Hispanic-Elected Local Officials, we had an advocacy meeting, strategic planning among all the, all the constituency groups, and talk about our vision for 2020 relative to the National League of Cities. And it's great to represent the city of Mesa on the National League of Cities and to be, and take advantage of these opportunities. So, it was great meetings.
Thank you for representing the city so well. Other comments? Frankie?
Real quick, yesterday, we attended the 41st Annual adoption ranch HOA breakfast with the city of Mesa. So, thank everybody in staff, and Mayor, and Vice Mayor for attending. You know, adoption ranch is one of the first HOAs in the country that makes, I think, West Mesa and the whole city of Mesa, one of the best places to live, I think. So, thank you, everybody, for, for attending.
Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Luna?
One more thing, I, I have to thank Parks and Recs. I've, I've been gone, obviously. So, we had an outstanding fishing event. We had over 336 people, families that attended. There was a stream of people coming, and I was afraid we're going to run out of fishing poles. But I appreciate working with Echo Hispanics, enjoying camping, hunting, and the outdoors as well as Mesa Parks and Recreation, as well as Arizona Game and Fish. They stocked the lake full of trout, and it was a great fishing event.
Wow, that's a sign that we need to do more fishing events, isn't it? That's great.
Yeah, I can tell you a lot about fishing. Yeah, we need to do a lot more.
Yeah.
And, oh, that is, that's, that's...
Dan?
I wanted to bring up the Neighborhood Leader Dinner that we, I know that you were there, and Vice Mayor Freeman was there, and Jeremy Whittaker, Councilmember Whittaker, was there. On Tuesday night at the Arizona Museum of Natural History, it was a Neighborhood Leader Dinner and Dialogue, and we all got together and let the neighborhood leaders and, well, just our neighbors in general across the city engage in a dialogue about what they do to engage their neighborhood, what they could do better, what their concerns are. And what I loved about it is that the neighbors, the residents, were leading the discussion. We're giving subjects to discuss, but they were not, we were not talking, 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 and they listen, 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 which is a, a lot of what we do, which is kind of boring. So, I enjoyed doing a lot more listening than talking and understanding what their concerns and the cool things that they're doing. I want to thank the Neighborhood Outreach Department for putting on a phenomenal program of their Neighborhood Leadership Program that is ongoing. There's all kinds of classes, and I appreciate everything they're doing, as well as everybody, all the residents that came forward and participated, and look forward to this next set of sessions, classes.
Right. To me, it's a lot like the, the swimming, or the fishing event. I mean, we had a, really a better-than-expected response. And so, that's a good sign to us that there is a big appetite among our community to, to come out and talk about what they can do to be more engaged. So, that was encouraging to see. Other comments, Council? There were some great events this weekend. I, I just want to also add that I attended a breakfast yesterday for the Mesa Public Schools Foundation. This is, we've got some great organizations. We've got several school districts in, in the city that we want to support, but the way that we can help do that is through the foundations. We, we need to look for opportunities to engage. The foundation does a lot of extra things, helping teachers with small grants, helping families that need some assistance with eyeglasses and hearing aids and things, but they're really trying to up their mission to get more involved, to kind of preserve the legacy that we have in Mesa of a city that, that supports public education. So, kudos to everyone that's been involved in the, in the business community and at the school district for trying to take that organization to the next level. And I'm looking for opportunities, I hope we're all looking for opportunities to support that, that organization. If there's nothing else, Mr. Brady, what's our schedule look like?
So, Mayor Council, we'll have a study session Thursday, or, yeah, Thursday, February 20th, and join Monday, February 17th, Office President's Day holiday. So, so we'll see you next Thursday.
Great. Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? Thank you. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, we are adjourned.